County Commission meeting order, we're welcome everybody being here today. We do have a quorum as all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Ivy who is on Sheriff's Department related duties up in the northern part of the state. Uh, our invocation was supposed to be led by Pastor Jacob McFadden, but he didn't walk in at last minute, did he? Okay, so our invocation today will be led by Commissioner Curtis Harvey and our pledge religiously led by Commissioner Tracy Adams, if you'll all stand.
That is great. That is great. Father God, we thank you for each and every person, oh God, that is present on this morning, oh God. We thank you for our ability, oh God, to, to live and move. Oh God, we thank you for the being that you put inside of us, oh God. Thank you for the decisions, oh God, that should be made on this morning, oh God. We thank you for everyone that is representing, oh God. We pray, oh God, that we lead, oh God, and with everything that we do and put our hands to it brings glory unto you. God, we pray now, oh God, for all our systems, oh God, within our city and our community, oh God, and throughout this entire nation. In Jesus' name we pray and everyone say it. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, you each received a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Hearing, second by Commissioner Adams, all in favor say aye. Any opposed nay. Minutes are approved. Uh, announcements and comments, any announcements or comments from the commission? And we have a lot of special guests here today and they're going to be here for the first item under awards and presentations. We'll do that. Uh, since there's no announcements, I guess we'll do it right now without any objections. So if you are, let's see, an elected official, uh, would y'all please come up? Um, thank everybody that's supposed to know who's supposed to speak and I think everybody else, we're gonna call them up in just a second.
Yes, sir, you guys.
Come right here.
Right here, sorry.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah.
There are a lot of days, months, sometimes years where it seems like, you know, we know we have an issue, know we have a problem, try to, that we need to solve. Seems like nothing's, nothing happens. And then all of a sudden things kind of come together because we got the right people in the right place. Shout out to Mayor Marcus Lee, but he says, uses that line quite a bit. Um, but today is a great day for Houston County. We, we've had a distribution park at the south side of the county for years. And it's had a tremendous amount of potential for a long time that has been unrealized because it's not, it's never had the utilities that it's really needed uh, to grow and flourish and attract business. But those days are coming to an end. Um, I know a few years ago, we, we ran a five million dollar water line, made it almost to the distribution park, but then, you know, had inflation, everybody remembers that, money kind of ran out. But we are within striking distance of this money that we've received today because of the grant funding, because the generosity of a lot of partners that are here today is going to put that over the top. And we already have a company looking at that distribution park and I'm sure we'll have a lot more lighting up. So, um, uh, I do want to give a special shout out to, to, to people and the leaders and the organizations that have partnered with us on this project. City of Dothan could not do it without them or Dothan Utilities, Houston County Water Authority, know y'all are here, we'll call y'all in just a second. Uh, and all of our local partners, which I'm gonna do my best to read and I hope I don't miss anybody. Uh, Friend Bank, Great Southern Regions Bank, Mid-South, River Bank and Trust, Sanovus, Troy Bank and Trust, Wiregrass Electric Cooperative, always a great partner and always glad to have Brad Kibbrow and his staff with us in Southeast Alabama Electric Cooperative. We would not be here today without every single one of those organizations and the people that lead those organizations. So, thank you. And at this time, I'm going to propose a round of applause for our partners with this spot. We also would not be here without the law that enabled this program and made it, made it possible. So, uh, this time I'm going to call up, uh, Representative, I think Paul Lee, I think you're going to say, Donny Chastain, sorry, thank you. Senator Chastain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Uh, it's always good to be with you, especially when we have some good news that we have today to announce. And, uh, Commissioner Chairman talked about one thing, he mentioned one thing really key, and I think this is so important for who we are and where we are as a region and its partnerships. You know, it's hard to do anything alone. What, my legislative colleagues and I have always have all, always know that is that anytime you try to get something done, you have to have people working for you and with you. And that's what we've been able to do in Southeast Alabama. So, we're excited a bit to have this announcement today. Our delegation is always proud to support pro-business legislation. And that's what we're here today to celebrate. That's what the Growing Alabama Program does. It's designed to provide funding to help solve infrastructure challenges. And that's, that's the Commissioner Chairman talked about a minute ago. That's what we've been faced with in, at the Park in South. You know, you gotta have the water, you gotta have the sewer, you gotta have the power, you gotta have the broadband. All of those are, are vital parts of having an, an industrial site ready to attract good, good businesses to our community. So, we're in a position now with this announcement today. And, uh, Mr. Chairman is going, Bob will be in your court and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Matt Parker and Colton from the chamber to help us land that project. But the investment in these dollars for the distribution center will provide a better opportunity to attract industry and create jobs. And that's what it's all about for our area right now. Over the last two years, the Dothan Houston County Region has been able to utilize over 1.5 million dollars of growing Alabama funds to help solve these infrastructure problems. And with today's announcement, I think we're going to move a lot farther in, uh, being able to be, uh, uh, attract industry into Southeast Alabama. So, I'm going to step aside now and let Representative Paul Lee, uh, share the really good news about what we're here today to celebrate. Thank you.
Good morning. First thing I'd like to do is recognize a few folks, Representative Rick Rain, uh, part of this to make this happen and of course Representative Steve Klaus, Donny Chastain and myself. That's just some of our legislate, legislative delegates that we have. Also Jeff Sarrows and Billy Beasley are a part of our delegation. So, we're very grateful. But we in the state of Alabama want to do pro-business laws. And obviously we see businesses going all over the state of Alabama. So, we've been working on this. This isn't, didn't just happen. This has been working on for a year and a half, two years to get it to the point that we're able to have the funding for this, plus those that are a part of here that are helping sponsor. I've been in manufacturing, gosh, I might could say all my life. I was with Sony for 31 years, with W R six for 10. So, if you add that up, I'm a young man, that's 41 years in the manufacturing business. The fact is, the people that are looking for business at our location, they made that decision six months ago. They didn't make it today and going to start looking. They already know they're looking. What this money does is actually give us the opportunity to be shovel ready and to get some sewage lines done. Sewage, power, those type of things are what businesses are looking for. They're looking for people to work. Well, we're very fortunate today. Well, in our area, in just a couple of three county area, we've already brought back eight million plus dollars. We figured it out just a few minutes ago for pro-business legislation that's coming here to recruit businesses. And so, we're doing our very best. Now, as is said with the chamber, the city and the county, all working together, we can do that. There's funny stories of how Sony got here sometime on the sideline. I'll tell you how Sony got here. And, uh, but today we want to go out, we want to earn it. We want to make sure that we have the best location provided. So, today we're going to be presenting the 3.257 million dollar check to help this project move along, to make us ready for that person that already knows they're looking for a place. We just, they just don't know where Dothan is yet. So, thank you. Thank these guys. So, appreciate you. And I was supposed to introduce our lovely mayor.
You're vertically challenged, Mayor. Had to get the mic down just a little bit. And I have to have notes for like four points. I mean, what's up with that? I get older, I guess. And it's great to be here. It's great to be a part of a dream team and, and, and with the chamber and Industrial Development Board and all the people that we have. It truly is like being on the dream team. And, and we've talked about partnerships and we talked about working together. And I've been all over the state, working with the league municipalities, the Big Ten mayors. And you see other places have these agreements written out about how they're going to work together in partnerships and having an MOU. Our MOU has been in place for decades by handshake and our word of honor and working together because we know that in our area, that the city, what's good for our city, what's good for our county, what's good for our neighbors in, in the neighboring counties is good for us all. And when we work together, we are a better people, we are a better community. We can compete with anybody else in the state of Alabama. And because we do have some of the best shovel-ready sites, and with this, it almost gets us to a platinum level uh, with, with the Houston County Distribution Park. So, I am so pleased to be a part of that. The Dothan, uh, Utilities Department is going to help with, uh, getting that water line and treating the sewer as well, uh, out that way. And so, it, there will be nothing else that could, uh, a company could say that we don't have at that site that we will now have. And thanks again to, we got grateful, our state delegation. Give them another hand, y'all. And we are grateful and appreciative and thank you so much.
Now, we're going to do a check presentation, take photos. When I ask all the partners that are listed here, you can send up a representative or if you're here, uh, come on up. Uh, Industrial Development Board of the City of Dothan, if you are here, come on up. And also, the picture would not be complete without Matt and Colton, the Chamber of Commerce. So, if y'all would all come up, we're going to squeeze in and pretend we like each other. And that's not, it'll take a whole lot of pretending because we actually do. So, y'all want to come on up, we will pose for a photo.
Want to bring it to the front, the front of the.
Yeah, keep, keep watching that check, yeah. I'm going to be saying, we don't stand up. Mayor, you might want to come up here. Dave's, come on up here.
Mayor, thank you.
Whisper champion.
Yeah, it's true.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to the second item under awards and presentations, which is recognition for third quarter service anniversaries. Let's share it. You come around too, Miss Sherry. Just remember to cut off the microphone. Yeah, we got to record it. Congratulations. Yeah, I get. There we go.
Okay, so I know we have a very important group of people up here just a few minutes ago, but I'm presenting to you an equally important group. Um, so I'm not, I'm not sure. I know that several that did not make it here today. Want to recognize all of, uh, I'll do five, 10, 15, 20 and so forth increments. When I call your name, raise your hand, let everybody know who you are. The first person I have is Ken Van Lanningham, and I don't think he's here. These are all five-year service anniversaries. Michael Wilson, Lee Pace and Elizabeth Gracie. I don't think any of them are here. Uh, Tammy McNeil's got five years. Cameron Jackson is not here. Tim Brackens, five years. Wes Gibbs, five years. And Brandon Bearfield, Bearfield, five years. The next are our 10-year, um, anniversary. Debbie Lewis and Jackie Kennedy. Um, and Honey Debbie. 15 years, not here is Anthony Hunter. We've got Robert Reichert here with 25 years. Um, Greg Holland with 30. Thank you all every day for what you did for Houston County. We're glad to have you and we also enjoy working with you very much.
Absolutely. Thank y'all. Now, we're going to move on to the regular agenda. We have a request to appoint Richard Byrd to Southeast Alabama EMS Count. Motion. Hearing, second by Commissioner Adams. Since questions or discussion on this item. All in favor say aye. Any opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number two is a, is a request to reappoint Bernard Moore to the Houston County Healthcare Authority for District One.
The motion.
Motion by Commissioner Harvey, second by Commissioner Adams. Questions or discussion on this item? All in favor say aye. Any opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number three is a request to make appointment to the Houston County Healthcare Authority for District Two.
Uh, I'd like to make a comment first. The Hospital Authority says some outstanding individuals.
First make your motion.
Okay, my bad.
Sorry.
Kathy Meadows will be the representative for District Two.
Okay, so we have a request to appoint Kathy Meadows to Houston County Healthcare Authority for District Two by Commissioner Adams. Second by Commissioner, uh, Herring. Why I get y'all's last names confused. Commissioner Adams.
Yes, I'd like to repeat. The Hospital Board done outstanding job, uh, sent us some names in and you couldn't go wrong, well, real outstanding names. And I appreciate their due diligence. I'll submit the name. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I would agree with that. Um, any other questions or comments on this? All in favor say aye. Any opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number four is a request to make appointment to Houston County Healthcare Authority for District Three.
Uh, yes, and I make a motion to appoint Paula Carruthers.
We have a motion to appoint Paula Carruthers to Houston County Healthcare Authority for District Three by Commissioner Herring. Second by Commissioner Harvey. I think you wanted to say something, maybe.
Yeah, we'll, we'll move on.
Okay, yeah. All right, uh, any questions or discussion on this? All in favor say aye. Any opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number five is a request to reappoint Chris Sutter to the Houston County Healthcare Authority for District Four. Motion. By Commissioner Herring. Second, I believe I heard Mr. Harvey first. Mr. Ivy is out of town today, but he made it clear on Thursday that he wanted to reappoint Chris Sutter, who he just recently appointed to fill an unexpired term. So, uh, any questions or comments on this item? All in favor say aye. Any opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number six is, is a request to approve purchase of a food slicer for the jail utilizing $6,187.06 and 6 cents of emergency capital replacement funds.
So, move.
Question by Commissioner Harvey, second by Commissioner Adams. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number seven is a request to award janitorial contract to Macklemore Building Maintenance.
Motion.
Second, motion by Commissioner Herring, second by Commissioner Adams. We talked about this Thursday. All in favor say aye. Any opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number eight is a request to adopt a resolution regarding replant, rezone and transfer of real property to Houston County Public Building Authority.
Motion.
Second, Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Harvey. Talked about this as well. This has to deal with Farm Center and building a new, uh, DHR building. It could be a great asset for the community. They've been needing to build it for a number of years now. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed nay? Motion passes. Uh, item number nine is a request to adopt resolution in support of the Alabama Legislature to oppose any legislative changes that would disrupt the SSCT programs operations or call the programs constitutionality. Any questions?
Motion.
We have a motion by everybody. But I'm going to say, let's go with Commissioner Adams and we'll say second by Commissioner Herring. Any questions or comments on this? Thought about this for a while on Thursday as well. This will be forwarded to the local delegation as well as the ACCA. Uh, all in favor say aye. Any opposed nay? Passes. Item number 10. Item number 10 is a request to award bid for crust lime rock, lowest bitter meeting specs.
Motion.
Second. Adams, second by Commissioner Harvey. Questions or discussion on this for country? I. All in favor say aye. Any opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number 11 is a request to enter into a construction agreement with the state of Alabama for resurfacing a section of old web road.
So, second.
Motion by Commissioner Harvey, second by Commissioner Adams. Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number 12 is, is a request to approve the 2025, 2026 budget.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Adams.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Herring. Short meeting. Uh, I, uh, Peter?
Screen, I just wanted to ask you gentlemen, if you would mind going along with the handout that I gave you. Oh, thank you. Um, for having a little tech, it could probably be on this side of.
They'll be able to see it.
They should be able to see it. Would you have before, we have before you gentlemen is an executive summary of, that we have, uh, we discussed in the open meeting back in August. Modified by those few items that the commission had given the instruction regarding, uh, specifically as it relates to payroll and then some other last year items that came up. The, the need for a new location for sanitation building that was included in this. Um, and, um, and then some marketing, the marketing dollars that we had put back into the budget because we continued, we extended that contract for another quarter. Um, but if you'll see that, um, the major highlight areas, uh, labor, and you'll see later on when we're, when we talk about labor is continuing to become a, a larger portion of our overall expense budget. Um, but in order to be able to fully adopt the sanitation collection, we needed an additional customer service rep. And we're trying to, um, move more of our IT support services in-house as opposed to using outside consulting services. Uh, those are the two major labor changes. Um, and labor related, we have built in a one and a half percent COLA as the commission had requested. I do want to point out that our healthcare costs are estimated to go up by 4.71% this year, which is lower than it has been in the past, but it's still, you know, an advancing uh, cost. Uh, but one of the, uh, larger items that are contributing to our expenditures, uh, increases is the, uh, increase to the tier one and tier two benefits from RSA. This is a, this is a number that they give us, a percentage they give us based upon, uh, web category, the employee falls in and this is a percentage of salary. And I think the last year was 9.58. So, it's almost two full percentage increase uh, to fund the, uh, liability for retirement. This is sort of, uh, major items that were, that were included in this year's budget. Um, we have some, uh, patrol vehicles for the sheriff. We have some transport vehicles, some ancient transport vehicles that need to be replaced for community corrections. As, as IT and, and computer interaction has become more and more vital to the, um, uh, the processing of the services that are provided to county citizens, uh, just about every department is going to be touched, uh, in the years coming. On IT, uh, upgrades and improvements, things are changing drastically that we're moving a lot of our, uh, software to, uh, cloud-based subscription softwares. And so, we're needing to keep up with our, uh, operating systems. You can't, you can't get by with old operating systems. And so, we're having to upgrade our, our, um, our servers and our, um, laptops and, and desktops. Um, Roden Bridge this year is going to have two motor graders, a loader and some crew craps to, uh, to transport those workers around to the various sites where they work. Uh, sanitation is going to have, uh, two garbage trucks, a knuckle boom, some pickup trucks to move, um, to, to run the roads to see where sanitation collection needs to occur and that building expansion that I mentioned earlier. This is a summary of the, um, all the funds in our, uh, in our county. The commission really has discretion over the general funds and we'll get to that in the, in the next page. But this includes all of the special funds, the special reserve funds such as Roden Bridge and some of the other, uh, funds that are funding for which is dedicated to be used for a specific purpose. So, that they're considered special res, uh, funds. Um, the, this is, the next page is the general fund only. So, you'll see that, um, we're anticipating with our revenue and our expenditures that we're going to commit in a fund balance just under the $15 million target that, uh, we've established. Now, that's an internal target. That's not a, uh, a county policy. This, this exceeds the county policy requirements, the county, county policy 38. That number is around 11 and a half million dollars. So, 14.7 comes in significantly above that. Um, but I, I want to point out that we are continuing to, our, our expenses are continuing to outstrip our revenues. Now, to be fair, you know, truthfully, I conservatively forecast revenues. I, I, I don't want to, um, have a situation where things don't come in as we were hoping. And I'd have to go back to the departments and say, you know, we've got to do something to change. But this is not a sustainable business model. We need to figure out a way where we can, as, as Commissioner Herring said, either find other sources of revenue or find ways to cut back on our expenditures. Uh, the chairman and I have been talking about that and we'll hopefully have some ideas that we can present to the departments and to yourselves later on as we go through the year. Um, go into the revenues. This is kind of giving you an idea of where the revenue is primarily come from. Majority of the revenue, the revenue commissioner's office, the ad valorem taxes. Uh, and the next largest is sales and use. Of the sales and use of that, about 6% come from the SSUT. So, that's a very important, uh, item of revenue for the county that we need to preserve the best we can. I know there's been a lot of, uh, sort of conversation in the tax that are on that. That's a vital uh, source of funding for the, for the county. Um, and I, the next, the next slide shows you the ad valorem taxes. Um, and what I want to point out with this is you'll see that the slope of increases is, uh, flattening. And, and that is, uh, because. And, and that is, uh, because of the anticipation of the effect of that new law on the appraised value of properties. Um, we, we are advantaged somewhat here, uh, not so much as some of the larger counties like the, like Mobile, the Baldwin and, and, uh, Montgomery and and up in the Huntsville area where they're seeing a tremendous amount of growth. Because this limitation on this new law only applies to existing properties. So if someone buys a piece of property, then the assessed value gets reset. Uh, new builds, the assessed value gets reset. So in their areas of growth, this, it's gonna be a little bit more, um, disguised as far as the impact of that law. But we can see here that it's impacting us slightly, even though we have some good growth in our area. We're seeing a lot of business development and a lot of, um, personal residences that are being built. We're still anticipating with the, because this is the number that comes from the state, from our revenue department. We're still anticipating that it's gonna have an impact on this, on this county. Now, that does sunset two more years out. So we might see some relief then, but we'll have to see how it works out. This is to give you an idea of the sales and use tax and, and the trends that we're seeing here. Uh, we are anticipating a two and a half percent increase in S S U T, uh, revenues. Again, trying to be conservative. Um, and, um, and also it's been, uh, adjusted for any sort of M O U's that y'all are contemplating entering into. I thought we should build that into the budget just to be safe. On the expense side, you can see here that the majority of the expenses aren't in salary and benefits. Uh, clearly fifty percent. Now again, we budget on full positions, full complement. So where there are vacancies, we'll experience less than this number of payroll benefit. But of course we have the budget for the, um, full, uh, positions that have been approved by the commission. And this gives you an idea of, of the salary benefits and the other departments' operating expenses. This sort of breaks it down on a, on a whole county-wide basis on where that money is being deployed by the county's commission. Um, and the sheriff and jail gets thirty-one percent of it, Roden Bridges gets twenty-eight percent. And then it gets parsed out based upon the various other services that are provided to the citizens in our county. This is the number of employees that I mentioned earlier. We're, we're looking to add two positions into this new budget. So, but this is giving you an idea of the, of the growth we've experienced over the last ten years or so of, of headcount. Uh, and we need to think about ways in which we can approach our citizens' needs uh, without adding people. Some positions and some services are, are people driven. Pottles, I mean, roads and bridges, paving, the jail, sheriff, I mean. But in the other areas that we provide services to their citizens, we need to think in terms of how can we provide those services more efficiently, more effectively? This gives you an idea of our historical, uh, budgeted labor and benefits and what we have experienced in actual. Now, I do want to point out that the budget and actual for F Y twenty-five projected, it looks like it's merged together, but that's just because this is the way we sort of shifted the way we've approached the budget. We sort of based upon what was budgeted last year to what was budgeted, what was expected to be spent and then what was budgeted for next year. So in, in reality, I expect that to be a little less, coming in a little less than that forecasted. But that was just a function of the way we changed the, the process to make it a little bit more, um, uh, easy for the departments to be able to decide where they want to spend their money. And this is the operations expenses now. And you can see it is somewhat flattening out, this, this is the expenses that are running in the operating departments. It is flattening out somewhat. Uh, but again, we need to find ways in which we can be more effective and efficient in the way we provide these services and in the services that we provide. This is an, this is a, a, a number that represents the agencies, the allocation of the funding that the commission gives to various community activities and community, uh, services that are provided like the library and health department and other smaller, to small towns, towns and municipalities that we provide. Now, the, the big jump there that year, that's when the commission may recall, gave a large number to the associations as opposed to taking it out of ARPA. We just gave it to them out of the general fund. So that it wasn't, you, you get into a lot of rules and guidelines with ARPA money and that would have gotten a little complicated for them. Um, this is just showing the non-payroll on the larger items that we're spending money on, non-payroll related contract services, that's a lot of that is in, uh, Roden Bridges, the, the paving of the roads that we're, that we're, uh, addressing in the next budget year. And lease spending, we are, we're, we're trying to pay more as we go. We're trying not to incur, uh, extensive debt into the future on leases for equipment and or the next item is the bonds. Uh, now this year we did have a general obligation bond. And that was for the economic development and the, um, uh, youth sports facilities that we're funding around the county. Uh, the, in, expectation is that the majority of that money is gonna be funded out of the lodging tax revenue that we'll get from the additional one percent. Um, that's still ramping up, that's not quite reached that level of funding, but we didn't, we didn't, we pushed off the principal and interest until the beginning of the new fiscal year so that it would have an opportunity to grow into, uh, something that would cover the, uh, the debt service for that bond. Uh, then we, we have a, another W E bond that is a wiregrass electric bond. Uh, they are assisting us in a one percent funding for, um.
Did you, you say?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and, but that's a, that's a very low interest bond.
I don't think that, no, that's not been finalized, that's just kind of what
That's.
we're in discussions and we budget.
We budget for that. And so this is giving you an idea of the total bond payments and leasing mortgages. And so what we're, what the cash flow is going to be for twenty-five, twenty-six. You can see this year the total is maybe just under three million dollars. I do want to point out in the two years' time, it seems to jump to about four and a half million dollars. That's because the, the mortgage on the, uh, on that building is coming due. We, we were advertising it over thirty years, but it had a five-year balloon. So I fully anticipate that we'll be able to remortgage that, but it is coming due in two years. I just want to point that out to you too. Now, our insurance costs, as I mentioned earlier, is on a four point seven one percent. So you can see that by twenty-five, twenty-six, you can see the allocation out to the employee and the, uh, and the employer. Um, see that the employees' costs are gonna go from forty-one sixteen in their current year to forty-three ten, uh, on a per paycheck basis. Um, and the family coverage is going from one seventy-nine nineteen to one eighty-seven sixty-two. Uh, I just, I also want to point this out, that, uh, workman's comp and, um, the liability insurance is coming down. And that's because of the effective safety measures that are put in place as well as the low, uh, experience mod that we're seeing on the injuries and issues in a workman's comp play basis. And it's, and I mean, that's a, that's a, it's a, it's a hundred thousand dollars between those two guys. And, uh, we, we hopefully can keep that up. And that's the end of my summary.
All right, you go ahead. Lower the thing. I had a, a couple of comments about this, you know, I, I've been on the commission, this is probably my tenth budget, I'd guess, since being on the commission. Of course, the first probably a couple of years, I really didn't know what I was doing. Uh, I guess I'm, I can admit that now. Uh, you know, and, and there's, it, it's rare that we have a budget that I'm happy with. It does happen, but it's, those are kind of rare. Um, this budget gives me trouble. Uh, I'm, I'm troubled by this budget and I, I'm not, you know, I'm not pointing my finger at anybody. It's just the environment that we're swimming in, unfortunately, the Fed money that's been circulating for a number of years. You know, it's, that money's gone. I think we're seeing that with flattening revenues. Um, we're still in an inflationary environment. Uh, that makes it difficult to, uh, do business, especially with our stuff. Cause our, you know, groceries, it goes up a little bit, but I mean, we're, we're dealing with heavy equipment. That stuff's going up a lot. We're dealing with asphalt and aggregate, that's, that stuff's still going up a lot. Um, so we've, we've got some work ahead for us. And in the next six months, you know, we've got to figure out a way. We've, we've got to come up with a solution to right-size Keanu government relative to our income. Now, we, we don't have a choice. Uh, we've got to grow our fund balance. That's gonna make it even more difficult. So just com- compounding that problem, now we gotta grow our fund balance because we have to expand the jail. Like that is not an option. As it has been explained plenty of times, we will figure out how to do it. Or it will be done for us and they'll hand us the deal. And I promise you, that'll be a lot more expensive endeavor. So we gotta come up with a timeline and how we're gonna pay for it. Our head, our headcount growth, it, it, you know, it, I think this year it sort of makes sense. We're, we're taking some things that we had contracted out and we're bringing those services in-house. And I think we're gonna save money or we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that. But if you look at that growth of headcount, I mean, it's growing faster than the population of Houston County. So we've got to figure out ways to do things more efficiently. We've got a thing, we've got to figure out how to do things faster, better, cheaper. And, uh, and that's gonna require us to make some potentially painful decisions. And if I had one prediction, it would be this, that fourteen months from now, the county will look a lot different than it looks today. And, and I don't think that that is necessarily virtual. I don't think we have a choice. I think we've got some big decisions to make. So we got our work cut out for us. I just want you and anybody to think about running for office, though, what, what they're getting themselves into. Anyway, comments from anybody else?
I had a question on, Peter, on page, I guess eighteen, I'm, I'm assuming on, uh, non-related salaries. Expenses at seven point six million, can you give me a little bit more just about exactly what's going on with that? What did that consist of, the seven point six? I'm assuming it's page eighteen, that's what I'm on.
Yeah, that, that, uh, yeah, that's, that is contract services, that's seven point six million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So that's part of the thirty-two million dollars
Right.
that, that I've described. That primarily is, we use A C P A C and who's the other guys?
A C P A and who?
Well, yeah. For paving roads, uh, of, of, the majority of the contract services charges are coming out of Roden Bridge. Uh, for the, uh, the major paving projects.
Okay.
Three point six.
Three point six, what, what's, what's the other, four point three?
I'm not sure, but it's three point six, what we got contracts for.
I got you.
There's a lot of contract service funding that, I mean, payments that come out of, uh, county buildings.
Mm-hmm.
The janitorial contract and the landscaping contracts and some of the other contracts, uh, are coming out of uh, county buildings.
No problem, I'll look at it.
I know, uh, eight hundred thousand sanitation, uh, landfill bees.
Got you.
And I'll have for you gentlemen, before the end of the month, I'll have for you a full budget with all the details in it. So you can look by department, you can look by, you know, individual areas. Where these individual lands are.
Excellent. I said, do you have other questions?
Um, I got a few. Uh, I'm probably gonna get feedbacks, it was gonna get feedback.
I can turn it on.
Okay. All right. So, and chairman, you might have been asked for this too, but this is just a question really to let everybody else know where we're at.
Mm.
And, uh, what we got going on with our budget and our revenues and our expenses? Um, but explain why, you know, you'd said earlier that eleven and a half million is what our policy, you know, and our policy refers to, but we're gonna end up with a fourteen point seven million dollar at the end. And explain why that is to, you know, the public. So they'll understand that, you know, we don't really have three million more dollars sitting there to use wherever we want to. And, uh, if you don't mind, explain that.
The, the county policy, I think, I believe it's number thirty-eight, uh, was put into place fifteen years ago. And it's a, it's a formula, it's a, it's basically just algebra. You include these accounts, you include these accounts and you, twenty-five percent of the expenses that are incurred for those counts. The idea of that county policy is to sort of be your, uh, emergency reserve, if you will. Like you and I would have in our personal families. Um, but in order to be able to achieve a, a, the, the highest credit rating from the credit services so that we can lower our interest costs on any borrowings such as for the jail that we're gonna have to do in the next few years. Um, it would, it would, it would cost the county less if we could have a better credit rating. Now, we were in, we were, our, our red credit rating was stable for this general engagement work that came through, but there was a lot of conversation with the credit agency about our fund balance. And, um, we don't need to have those conversations.
Mm-hmm.
That, that, that difference in the borrowing costs is significant over time. And, you know, anytime we borrow for a jail, that's gonna be at least probably a twenty-year period. That interest rate is gonna be, I'm almost gonna make a big difference over twenty years.
Good. And one more question, this is, how long in your professional opinion, Peter? Do you think it's going to be before we're in a negative? If we have sixty-two million dollars in revenue and seventy-two million dollars in expenditures every year, that's a ten million dollar difference. How are we gonna sustain that and how, how quick do we need to look at generating revenue and trying to figure out what we need to do for the best interest of this county?
This needs to be a serious conversation next year.
Yeah, because I mean, to answer your question, it's not sustainable. Now, to what Peter was saying earlier, we tend to, and which I think is wise, um, very conservatively budget for revenue. And we account for full employment with our, with our budget as well. So typically what happens is our revenue comes in above or above what we budget and expenses come in below. So I would be shocked if we have a ten million dollar deficit at the end of this year.
I should be fired.
Yeah. But, but that, that, that still budgeting that much is unsustainable.
No, it's gonna be a deficit.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And, uh, okay. Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Adams and a second by Commissioner, uh, Harry, I believe.
Mm.
All in favor of approval of the budget, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, both say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes. Staff reports, Mr. Chief, administrative officer.
No reports today, sir.
All right, Mr. County Engineer.
We have, uh, full closed roads, Wrath Road, East Cook Road, Cedar Springs Road and Alice Meadow Road. And we also started the boat ramp project today. So the board and boat ramp will be closed for approximately six to eight weeks.
Got you, it's pretty good, pretty fast turnaround, I would think.
Yes. Okay. For a retail project, it's pretty good.
It's not bad, yeah, thank you. Uh, Mr. County Attorney. All right, any questions for the staff, for the commission?
No.
Okay. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Your turn.
Thank you.